The Carlos meeting has the Carter County Commission, we would like to thank 2014 Board of Representatives.
Peter Peters.
Here.
Milton Campbell.
Here.
Martin Todd.
Here.
Nancy Brown.
Here.
George Streep.
Here.
Richard Winters.
Here.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Here.
Eric Siss.
Present.
Charles Von Cannon.
Present.
Elsie Teszler.
Here.
Steve Ray.
Present.
Tom Allen.
Here.
Joan Lankin-Chief.
Present.
Bobby Davis. Bobby Dees.
Present.
Ian Arnold.
Here.
Steve Chambers.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Sonya Kohler.
Present.
Russell Cott.
Here.
Scott Sands.
Here.
Bill Armstrong.
Pat Heed.
Present.
Robert Gollum.
Here.
Now we have our opening prayer by Lawrence Hopp.
Father God, we thank the board of commissioners for being in this situation here all along more times. Father God, we just thank you today, thank you for the great weather we've had, just for being kind and around. Happy Lord, you always look for deep, for kind, so your name might be honored in the Lord's time. We thank you for this time together, we have our country, we have our nation. Soldiers, oh, the Lord is on the far field, watch over the care farm, take them back on way. Thank you for our country, and our state, and our county, Christ is the precious name we pray.
Now, I'll give you some more plates of the lead. Attention, salute, play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we have to recognize our elected and appointed officials and guests. Y'all please stand up. At this time will the Commissioners of the Sixth District come up? Please come up. We have a presentation of the plaque that has been on the main of the sports basketball team.
What an honor it is to now come out here and honor these five men in the Hampton Hill Elementary School. It's great that we're approaching the beating four man anniversary of the state tournament that went to the state tournament in Hampton, and these boys here have accomplished the same thing, the T double A, this double A, this is recognized as state championship. You know, we built a new school there a few years ago, Elton High School, and the high schools aren't there anymore that won the championship, but the sole still there, and the school's set apart as well. And it's an honor, to honor Hampton Hill Elementary School, Middle Boy, East Tennessee Middle School Boys 2014 Double A Sectional Champions. Would they come up, please?
He reminded me of the work that these kids put in. Not only are they great athletes, but they're also great in the classroom. They work basketball in more as a year right on, it's conditioning, it's practice, but it's also getting the boots. And these kids have shown a great example, Coach Hackley has done a great job with this team up there. So, Coach, I'm happy to commend the commission, we review this plaque for outstanding athletic achievement. Hampton Hill Elementary School, East Tennessee Middle School Boys 2014 Double A Sectional Champions. Let's give them a big hand.
Father God, now let me say this. I think their achievements have been under publicized and under recognized by the Piggles County, and I'm glad we're taking this opportunity to applaud them for their outstanding achievement. Thank you all.
Now we have public comments. You'd like to make a public comment? Mr. Peters? Mr. Peters, you have two minutes to comment on anything that's on the agenda.
All right. On anything that's on the agenda?
Yes.
Can I ask that I be allowed to comment on something that's not on the agenda?
No, sir. It has to be, depending what's on the agenda or not.
All right. Well, members of the court, the commission, I'm sorry, I'm so used to being the court when my daddy was a manager. I want to thank every one of them for the opportunity to get up here and the fact that we are now in the very beginning of public comments. I appreciate that. Thank you very much, thank you to the court, and thank you to our chairman, that he put us in that. And I'd like to see Mr. Von Cannon after the meeting, since I can't address the water issues on the road, because it's not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Any other comments? Have you any other comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Stetler. I live in Hunter, near the airport. I was notified to come to the meeting that there was going to be discussion about the stability of the underground beneath the court. I don't know if that's on the agenda.
No, sir, I'm sorry, it's not. But thank you for coming. That will be addressed, you can come to the planning commission if you'd like to.
And when, when does that start?
That'd be next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday at three o'clock.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for coming. Any other public comments? Saying none, we'll close our public comments, and Mr. Von Cannon will fill our group's information. I'll go.
I believe you made a statement that, unless it was on the agenda that you couldn't speak to this, well, there's an item not on the agenda that I'd like as a commissioner to speak at.
Well, this is public comment. We can get to that later.
Well, I'm sure that you're wrong there, sir, because a commissioner at any point in time can make a statement. It doesn't have to be a public comment, it doesn't have to be a pleader, at any point in time, sir, according to the rubber rule of order. And I asked for five minutes.
No. Denied. No. Thank you.
And I do appreciate you bringing me to the packet.
You're welcome. Now we'll have Mr. Dean Bladens. Mr. Dean Bladens. Mr. Bladens is not here right now, maybe we can come back if he comes in later. Next, I want the election of civil service board member. You do not have any applications in the packet. Just the cows. There's been one applicant, and I'll take the responsibility for if not many in your packet, such as Mr. Johnson.
Adam Johnson.
Bradley Johnson, that's correct, thank you. I don't know why I brought that application, but he gets submitted a couple of months ago. We've had no other applications received in the clerk's office, and this was advertising Elizabeth and Starr on February 12th. So, at this time, the court will be open for nomination. Mr. Lewis.
I'll nominate Bradley Johnson for the Jefferson District.
Thank you. Mr. Gollum.
Katie Snyder.
Mr. Snyder is already on there, sir, his term's not up yet, but I appreciate your nomination, and I'm sure he does.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cap. Are there any other nominations? Call Ruffler.
Peter Seaton.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Justin Pettigas.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lankin-Chief.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ian Arnold.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Gollum.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Gollum. All a aye, say aye. All a aye, say no. Motion carried. I have another question, Bonds.
Senator Kay Eller, Gay A. May, Lindsey Shur, Sherwood, Amy West, Melissa Lee Hall, Amber Chatteris. My boy, Kevin Niantan, James S. Church, Justin Kamau, Tony E. Gedge, and Engriff Delugis, Financial Management.
And a motion to approve. Mr. Cott, second by Mr. Culler. Any discussion? All a aye, say aye. All a aye, say aye. All a aye, say aye. Motion carried. At this time we have a mayor's report. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor passing over the board chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now we'll have our committee reports. Budget Committee, Mr. Sis.
The Budget Committee met February 10th, and the first thing that we have on, given your take care of this evening, is listing of donations that have been received that are designated for the animal shelter, and they're in the minutes of the Budget Committee meeting. I make a motion that we accept the donations, and the total amount is $1,415 to go to the animal shelter.
I have a motion by Mr. Sis, second by Ms. Brown, to approve the recognition of the donations to the animal shelter. And then we begin. Call Ruffler.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Streep.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Eric Siss.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Teszler.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lankin-Chief.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ian Arnold.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Gollum.
Aye. All ayes, motion carried.
Now, I make a motion to approve Highway Fund 131, number three, with two items, for a total of $314,330, $75,600, $3583 coming from Highway Fund balance. I make a motion to reapprove this amendment.
Second. Now, a motion from Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Crivitt, to approve Highway Fund 131, Budget Amendment Number Three. Is there any discussion? Call Ruffler.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Streep.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Eric Siss.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Teszler.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lankin-Chief.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Bobby Dees.
Aye.
Ian Arnold.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Gollum.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Now, I make a motion to approve the Highway Fund 131, number three, with two items, for a total of $314,330, $75,600, $3583 coming from Highway Fund balance. I make a motion to reapprove this amendment.
Second. Now, a motion from Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Crivitt, to approve Highway Fund 131, Budget Amendment Number Three. Is there any discussion? Call Ruffler.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Streep.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Eric Siss.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Teszler.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lankin-Chief.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Ian Arnold.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Gollum.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Now, I make a motion to approve the Highway Fund 131, number three, with two items, for a total of $314,330, $75,600, $3583 coming from Highway Fund balance. I make a motion to reapprove this amendment.
Second. Now, a motion by Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Crivitt, to approve the Highway Fund 131, Budget Amendment Number Three. Is there any discussion? Call Ruffler.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Streep.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Eric Siss.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Teszler.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lankin-Chief.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Ian Arnold.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Gollum.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Now, I make a motion to approve the Highway Fund 131, number three, with two items, for a total of $314,330, $75,600, $35,600, $3583 coming from Highway Fund balance. I make a motion to reapprove this amendment.
Second. Now, a motion by Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Crivitt, to approve the Highway Fund 131, Budget Amendment Number Three. Is there any discussion? Call Ruffler.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Streep.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Eric Siss.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Teszler.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lankin-Chief.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Ian Arnold.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Gollum.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Now, I make a motion to approve the Highway Fund 131, number three, with two items, for a total of $314,330, $75,600, $35,600, $3583 coming from Highway Fund balance. I make a motion to reapprove this amendment.
Second. Now, a motion from Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Crivitt, to approve the Highway Fund 131, Budget Amendment Number Three. Is there any discussion? Call Ruffler.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Streep.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Eric Siss.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Teszler.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lankin-Chief.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Ian Arnold.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Gollum.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Now, I make a motion to approve the Highway Fund 131, number three, with two items, for a total of $314,330, $75,600, $35,600, $3583 coming from Highway Fund balance. I make a motion to reapprove this amendment.
Second. Now, a motion from Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Crivitt, to approve the Highway Fund 131, Budget Amendment Number Three. Is there any discussion? Call Ruffler.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Streep.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Eric Siss.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Teszler.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lankin-Chief.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Ian Arnold.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Gollum.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Now, I make a motion to approve the Highway Fund 131, number three, with two items, for a total of $314,330, $75,600, $35,600, $3583 coming from Highway Fund balance. I make a motion to reapprove this amendment.
Second. Now, a motion from Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Crivitt, to approve the Highway Fund 131, Budget Amendment Number Three. Is there any discussion? Call Ruffler.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Streep.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Eric Siss.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Teszler.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lankin-Chief.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Bobby Davis.
Aye.
Ian Arnold.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Kohler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
I.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
All ayes, motion care.
You have in your folder a copy of the fourteen, fifteen year budget calendar. We'll have to look that over and see when the Budget Committee will be working on next year's budget. Then from nominating our Mr. Chairman, we have Benny Colby, Coroner, his two-year term has been extended. Make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Colby as Coroner, and he has agreed to accept this.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Mr. Sisick, by Mr. Crigg, to appoint Ben Colby as a Coroner. Any discussion? I'll look.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Kim.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seuss.
Aye.
Charles Van Kynen.
Aye.
Elsie Taster.
Aye.
Elsie Taster.
Aye.
Steve Wren.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chamber.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Cole.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
And Robert Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Monkey, Mr. Chambers.
James Stewart.
Aye. All ayes, motion care.
The second item is from the Ag Committee. Mr. Hart recommended that Ronnie Hazelwood will replace Mike Niderfer. His term has expired. I make a motion that we approve his appointment.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Sisick, by Mr. Chambers, to approve this call and discussion. I'll look.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Kim.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seuss.
Aye.
Charles Van Kynen.
Aye.
Elsie Taster.
Aye.
Steve Wren.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless, Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chamber.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Cole.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
And Robert Cole.
All ayes, motion care.
That's all I have.
Now that's major, please. Did Sonja talk to you any more about what she...
We have two things from the Financial Management Committee that need your approval. One is a credit card reward policy. You have that in your minutes. And this is to... This was suggested by the auditors. I put that in the form of a motion that we approve the credit card reward policy.
I have a motion by Mr. Blankiship, second by Mr. Brown, to approve the credit card reward policy. Any discussion? I'll look.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Kim.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seuss. Harry Seuss.
Aye.
Charles Van Kynen.
Aye.
Elsie Taster.
Aye.
Steve Wren.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless, Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chamber.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Cole.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
And Robert Cole. Robert Cole.
Chris Gob, wake up.
I'm reading.
All ayes, motion care.
The next thing is in our Financial Management Policy and Procedure Manual, we have a definition of terms. And the definition that C Task attorneys have told us for debt service requirements is that that means as long as the obligations of the county are satisfied, that is the definition for debt service requirement. And I would like to put that in the form of a motion that we add this to the terminology definitions in our Financial Management Policy and Procedure Manual.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Blankiship, second by Mr. Cott, to approve the language in debt service requirement. Is there any discussion on it? I'll look.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Kim.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seuss.
Aye.
Charles Van Kynen.
Aye.
Elsie Taster.
Aye.
Steve Wren.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless, Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chamber.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Cole.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong, Kathy.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
All ayes, motion care.
That's all I have for Financial Management, for Health and Welfare. The only thing that I need to bring forward is that the AED training is due to start sometime this week. I don't have a definite date of time, but sometime this week.
Thank you, Mr. Blankiship. You also find in your package a letter from the Carter County Election Commission. I know you often read it, but for those in the audience or in the media, I'll read this. Your County Commission, the Carter County Election Commission would like to inform you about the change in voting location for the Range Precinct. The change is effective September sixth, two thousand fourteen, voting time reelection. The reason behind the change is due to the Range School being closed. The specific location change is Range Preci... Range Precinct moving from Range Elementary School to the new location, Fairview Baptist Church Fellowship Hall, five eight five Otter River, Otter River, Tennessee. With the input of the Third District County Commissioners, Harry Seuss, Ronnie Crivitt, Charles Van Kynen, and the voters of the Range Precinct, the Election Commission decides to leave the Range Precinct open and only change the voting location and make you aware of the decision. Thank you, Carter County Election Commission. By the third district, I hope you'll be aware. Building grants. Nothing to Mr. Sisick. The health and welfare, Dr. County Highway Committee.
I have that.
Law Enforcement Committee.
Mr. Chairman, our student of the pending going there for probation in Carter County has largely been stymied by scheduling difficulties due to rotten weather. It is proceeding at pace, and perhaps for the next time we meet, we'll have some time to read for it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Winters. Rules and bylaws committee.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Crivitt. Are there any other committees that I've overlooked?
I'd like to... ...meet some of the divisions by our ermine, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Come out of your meeting, and I've noticed there's so much money over there. Certain court clerk and you've got a bookkeeper over there that's doing this, and you went back and got so much. I think it's somewhere around a hundred and thirty-seven thousand a week, I'm sure. Is that money come back into the general fund yet? Where does it go?
That's not money to come into the general fund. It's not money that's missing, it's money that's undispersed.
I know, but where does it go?
It's like, if they have a case, and Keith, you may be able to elaborate more on this than I am, but if they have a case and the funds are held in that case, they don't disperse those funds until a judge awards the...
Well, I mean, there's even cases, there's even scenarios, and I certainly not reviewed the certain court clerk's audits, but several times there'll be cases where we have juveniles involved, where we'll have funds held by the court. It's been the safest place to hold the funds for these children for years on end. I personally, my own private practice, have cases where juveniles have been awarded money from C R X or from estates, and we hold the funds with the clerk because it's safer. That does result in some funds being held, and I don't know if that's some of these funds indicated here, but there are certainly cases where money's deposited with the court. Clerk of Master's office is a constant deposit of the funds for holding. I think probably their practice with the conservatorships of Clerk of Master even has a greater amount of funds you're holding. I wouldn't want to know what you're holding this much at the time, I'd imagine. It's a pretty good amount, and it's something that's held for a long period of time. And maybe I'm wrong, but some of the audit findings here result of these things just not being designated properly and being assigned to the proper cases.
There is a pool of money that is being held, and what they have not done is tied that pool of money to a specific cases. So there's no missing money, it's just unidentified as to what case it goes to. So she's been able to go back and track that and disperse it if it needs to be dispersed, or just at least tie it to the case where it's supposed to go.
Have you been in, did the county get any of that money that you know was so far, that you've got accounting for it?
No, sir, it's just the undispersed or the unidentified funds. It's not that the county would get it, it's just that it needs to be tied to the cases.
The days are up, four hundred and seven thousand dollars. Start with, I'm sure, six hundred... Six hundred thousand? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to the resolutions. We have a resolution for the community development block grant. That's in your package. I've had your package very long, but... I hear a motion to waive the reading of this resolution. So moved a motion of Mr. Hicks, a second, second by Mr. Chambers. And I would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All.
And one now by Mr. Lewis. We have a motion to accept this block grant.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Straighten, to accept this resolution for the community development block grant. Any discussion? Mr. Van Kynen.
Block grants have been the last blood of industrial expansion and other projects. Does anybody have any idea of what this administration is, their ideas are concerning block grants?
This is a...
Because I don't see any activity, but...
This is a one-hundred percent grant, is that... No matching funds?
There's some matching funds, but they're being matched by the Otter River Regional Water Authority. No county matching funds.
There's no county match in this, involved. This is from the Otter River.
Are we doing the Otter River block here? Which are we doing, are we doing the community?
Community development block grant. It may not have been the first in your package, but that is the first on the agenda. It starts out a resolution to authorize the county mayor to make and sign an application for community development block grant funds for rehabilitation of water lines in Carter County. Y'all see that? There is matching funds that is in the county, the county, the county of the Otter River Water Guards. Is there any other discussion? I'll look.
Peter Peters. Willie Kim.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Nancy Brown.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Harry Seuss.
Aye.
Charles Van Kynen.
Aye.
Elsie Taster.
Aye.
Steve Wren.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chamber.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Cole.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong, Patty.
Aye.
And Robert Cole.
Aye.
All ayes, motion care. Do we have a resolution for a home program grant? And there is no matching funds from the county. Do I have any motions to waive the reading of this?
I don't believe it.
Right. Motion by Mr. Crigg, second by Mr. Haas, to waive the resolution, or waive the reading of the resolution. All ayes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All.
Mr. Lewis votes aye. Motion carries. Do I have any motion to approve this resolution?
Make a motion.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Brown to approve, second by Mr. Blankiship. Is there any discussion? I'll look.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Kim.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seuss.
Aye.
Charles Van Kynen. Elsie Taster.
Aye.
Steve Wren.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless, Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chamber.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Cole.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Patty.
Aye.
And Robert Cole.
Aye.
All ayes.
All ayes, motion care. And we'll go through the consideration of addendum to the lease agreement between Carter County and nine-one-one agency for the building. County Attorney.
Sure. As a solution to some of the record storage up high or above the third floor, we moved records from this building to the nine-one-one building, and a portion of the building is not being used by their agency. The only thing their attorney's called and then requested, and had the mayor review it on behalf of the county before we sent it to the commission, was a, they wanted it holding harmless, essentially, that we're utilizing part of the building, but they're not taking responsibility for their records. They're in a sealed room, we have locks on the doors, and I think some new locks were installed. So all we're doing is holding them harmless for the, if the roof falls in or something happens to that structure, we're not going back to nine-one-one for our records, it's our problem. And if we lost the store, it's unfair. We prepared the agreement, Miss Rice approved it, or reviewed it on behalf of nine-one-one agency, took it to the Emergency Communications District, it was passed, it's been used, signed, it's back for us, if we get it signed, we'll complete it, I'll take it the mayor for his execution and we complete it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion by Ms. Cole to approve, second by Mr. Blankiship. Don't have any discussion. I'll look.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Kim.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown. Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seuss.
Aye.
Charles Van Kynen. Elsie Taster.
Aye.
Steve Wren.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joanne Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless, Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chamber.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Cole.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong, Patty.
Aye.
And Robert Cole.
Aye.
All ayes.
All ayes, motion care. Mr. Street, did I skip you in the landfill meeting?
You did, sir, but the minutes reflect the meeting, but I would encourage everyone to please read back the supporting issues going on, that will be coming back to this commission pretty soon, so I would ask each and every one, if they haven't had time to read the landfill minutes, to read those. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Street. Now we have our county attorney report.
This month, we completed quite a bit of research into a new form that's a problem for almost every county in the state of Tennessee, and it has to do with new rules being issued by Tennessee Department of Health. This sirens form must be completed on the death of an individual when it concerns any potential use of drugs in the home. Just completing my research and actually just advancing to the mayor, something that the mayor, myself, and the chairman will have to address and talk with, and probably come back and give a full report to the commission next month or the fall. New requirements that are costing counties quite a bit of money insofar as completing this form because of the required education levels of individuals who must examine and complete research on the death form. The death form is something that without an intense amount of medical training, you simply cannot complete it. And it's a new form, and it's something that we might have to address and get through the system, get taken care of, it's something required to do, and a lot of the sheriff's departments have had it fall on them, but it's really not even something that their people as a road officer will be qualified to do as well. There'll be more, much more to be talked about on that, but we've completed our initial research, that's something that's spent quite a bit of time on its front. Just as a cost basis of comparison, it costs Washington County about seventy to eighty thousand dollars as we do the rest of this year, the cost on them to get this thing managed. So it's a tag, and it's something that when we were meeting with the governors, representatives in Carter County, I even called the mayor, and we met with him and told him about the mandate, what it did to our county for cost. It's something that's coming, it's something that's an unfunded mandate for Nashville, any way you look at it. But we'll have hopefully more to address with next month to give you an idea, and we'll take it through Health and Welfare, I imagine, let the community flush out some of the details before we get up to the full commission. This is something that needs to be talked about before it gets here, to have some better understanding of it. We have a road issue on the Loach Road that I'm looking into, and I've set a meeting with the Sheriff's Department, Road Superintendent's Office, must have more meeting with them on Thursday morning, we've had some citizens who can't get to their home because they're having a roadblock, or we will look at that, we've actually went out and drove ourselves and measured off the county road list. It's something I think ultimately will fall back on, as many things, the old sheriff at this office, but we won't have the Road Superintendent give us an idea of exactly what he needs to be able to get snow trucks through, how much on each side for the right of way, but we're going to handle that, and hopefully have that taken care of before next month. We're meeting on Thursday at my office to hopefully move that forward. We did have responsive pleadings filed in the Tennessee Tavern versus Carter County case. We have motions dismissed, pleaded filed, as well as an answer in that case, and we have some strong defenses. Spent some time with our attorneys through Milligan and Coleman, and I really like the direction they're going, and I feel like we can certainly limit our damages, and then potentially then go on towards the actual issues of license. I'll give you, if I get a little bit more information, it's not just public record on the pleadings and some of the strategy session, that I'll give you a closed-door session at some point as to the progress of litigation, maybe even next month, depending on how fast these things move, some move fast, some move slow, it depends on how fast the attorneys push it in most of these cases. This month, I completed some utility research for the Utility Committee, which was fleshing out the potential resolution for the Otter River Regional Water Authority, it's always a mouthful for me, as far as different pays for different utility districts across the county, and I prepared a chart on that and went to that meeting, we had a very productive meeting, we didn't get a final resolution to bring the commission, but definitely looking into it makes progress. Had an issue come up with the landfill committee, and that research insofar as potentially making replacing a bid with the City of Elizabeth and Anamal with a lot more detail than to say, that we come up with a solution that allows Benny to move forward on behalf of the county, reserve the right, of course, for this full commission to review whatever he can work out to make sure it's something that you feel is a financial gain for the county. Miss Ingrid is working with Benny to make sure that the finances, the numbers add up before any bids are made, and we obviously trust her abilities, and she's certainly the number person. We've prepared the grant resolutions this month that you've looked at. We've got an issue that's come up with the interlocutory agreement on the animal shelter, that's just come to my attention the last day or two, we may have to do a revised agreement. Attorney Day has requested a meeting, and that's something I'll call him in the morning, just got the facts over today, actually, and reviewed it. It's something their auditors have called, just a couple of potential changes, it's not going to cost the county, it's not a monetary thing that costs us more money, but we may have to change some wording and potentially look at a couple tweaks on the agreement so that both sides' auditors are happy with that, and we've not had a complaint yet, I don't think, but the city has, so we'll have to work with them on that. Had a request and a talk from the mayor's office, and I've spoken with Chief Shaw, or Assistant Chief Shaw of volunteer fire departments, there's been some open records requests made on to water pressures on fire departments and water pressure on utility boards. The Open Records Act specifically, or Open Records Act has a specific exception if it's deemed that a record could provide weaknesses in the utility district's water structure, such as a certain portion of your district, there would not be enough pressure to fight so many fires at one time, and that's something that I'm going to prepare, I'm preparing a letter to Chief Shaw, and he'll distribute it to all the chiefs. They all have to make an individual call if they, if they feel that's a potential problem in their district. If it is, then we can protect those records, if there's no potential problem in that district, then we need to hand the records over, as simple as that. I'll let each chief make a call based on their, their district and talk with their utility district, but I'm going to give them the law on it, and it's something that we're, we're providing, he's going to pass out to every volunteer fire chief in the county, so it's, we've already done the research on it, it's a good thing to share, save them, has their attorneys do it, saves everybody a little bit of money, since we help them directly with funding, it saves us money. Completing a review of the HIPAA policy for the financial management committee, which I'll have Barbara Blakich for her next meeting. As far as this month, I'm due to litigation, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers.
Sure.
Any, uh, questions for Mr. Bowers? Commissioner Thomas. Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Chairman, I've, uh, I've been working on this about a year, and I've checked the C task, I've checked that the, uh, the, my district. It was brought up some time before about the, giving the, uh, fire departments the rights to sell fireworks in the county, uh, and keep all these outsiders out, and, uh, what I can find out is a very simple solution. Uh, the county's approves it, and the city limits it approves it, it ain't that we come to deny any citizen in Carter County selling a fire practice, times won't get hard, it is hard. And all the money that these fire departments, as good a work as they do, uh, it all boils to your basis, and they need all the help they can. And personally, I think I can work it out, but what I need from this commission, I need the, uh, 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 a motion to, uh, let the, uh, uh, approach the right people and see if it can get worked out, and then if it can, then I'll bring it back from the whole county commission, and I'm going to make that in the form of a motion that can give me, uh, uh, go to the company and see if I can work it out to help the fire departments out. And this don't affect, no, I'd say don't affect no Carter County people whatsoever, just the big people that comes in the, the most of the city and set up these big fire practices and try to keep, uh, uh, them, uh, keep them in the county.
Chairman, a motion by Mr. Lewis to, uh, to, uh, to authorize, uh, Mr. Lewis to contact.
Contact the fire authorities.
City.
They go through the city, and if they give the approval, then we come back to county commission, they give the approval, and then the, the two lawyers get together and go after, uh, according to, uh, C task, go off a simple agreement, uh, preventing any outside agencies to get the license and incorporate it inside, inside the county.
You mean anybody that resides outside the county?
Anybody that's outside the county.
I don't think you can.
They go affect anybody inside the county.
Don't, don't use the wording, just resides outside the county, you're going to get into a commerce clause issue. If you want to use voluntary fire departments, some people use it for just charities, uh, Washington County has a similar provision that I don't think is voluntary, and I, I need to look at, it's not the voluntary fire departments, it may be for churches, I'm not sure, but I do know they have some firework restrictions, and I can pull all their stuff and bring it over for you, it may be a good start point. I mean, we certainly can look at our neighboring counties, if they've got something of record, it might help us. But don't, don't word it, people reside outside of the county, you get into a, definitely a UCC issued ad.
Well, I have to apologize for the grammar, I will.
Oh, no, sir, I, I just don't want you to, I want to make sure we word it in a way that we can actually look at it.
Thank you, sir.
Just trying to help.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes, sir.
Uh, would you be willing to amend your motion to have the county attorney look into, uh, just authorizing the volunteer fire departments in Carter County to be the sole, uh, sellers of fireworks in Carter County? And come back next month and report to us what he's found out from other counties?
Well, uh, yes, in a certain extent, but, uh, according to what I found out, it's, uh, uh, we have to get the whole Carter County party, yes, sir.
Mr. Farris.
Mr. Peter.
I think the situation is, the county can do it for the fire departments that are out in the county, but the city is the one to let these big tents come in here, Wal-Mart, all these other places, Big Range, Iowa State, and I think what he needs to do is go to the city and get them to work on it, and with the county and Mr. Farris, then bring it back to the local nation.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
I have a question, you're talking about just the temporary tenants that come in here in certain kinds of years.
Right, the temporary tenants that come in here out of, uh, going in Wal-Mart, Engels, and any places like that, set it forward, and I didn't want to break this out, but I have done talks with most of the city council people, and they all agree, I don't think the government will break them down, okay?
Question, Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter.
Most of the individuals, they come in the city, such as Engels and places like it, they're getting paid by Engels, they're paying Engels to use that property, and so, you've got to be careful what we do there.
Mr. Carter.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Bowers, I know many of us here have traveled, I've seen going to Johnson City every day. About a mile and a half, two mile out there, Johnson City's got a sign up that says city limits thirty mile an hour. About thirty feet below that, there's a sign that says speed limit fifty-five mile an hour.
Let, let me stop you right there just a minute, Mr. Carter, and I'll, I'll let you continue this in just a second, but let, let's talk about, about this fireworks thing for just a minute, then we'll get to your, your point, okay?
Okay.
Thank, thank you, appreciate it.
Question, all aye.
Well, I believe we need a little bit more, uh, in-depth research, obviously, and just, uh, throwing it out there, but, uh, we'll, uh, we're going to head and load on Mr. Lewis's, uh, motion that, as it stands, we have a question, our motion, Mr. Street, I'm sorry. Call roll, please.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
I hope I can. A motion to allow Mr. Lewis to talk to the necessary people, which would, uh, uh, mean the city council, uh, all the volunteer fire departments, and, uh.
City mayor.
Yeah, obviously officials.
They just give you the authority to do it, neither brings it back.
To allow only the volunteer fire departments in Carter County to sell fireworks just in the county now, but we can't control the city. That's where I think the rub will come in, but, uh, that is the essence of your, uh, motion, is it, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, we have to get the approval from the city before we can do anything.
Mr. Chairman, I, I understood that, that residents of Carter County could still sell, I mean, if it, are we, I mean, I, I need clarity on the motion.
Well, we can't, we've got businesses in Carter County that sell fireworks, and we can't leave it to them, I wouldn't think.
No, I wouldn't do it.
That's why I thought it would be, uh, approved, let the county attorney look into this and report back to us next month.
Mr. Chairman.
Please give it approved.
It does not affect anybody, the fire practice now, like any citizens in Carter County, it don't affect no Carter County citizen, period. If they want to commit, if each citizen want to get a commitment, they want to, and if this is outside people that come in.
I believe Mr. Lewis agreed to amend his motion.
Did you agree to amend your motion, Mr. Lewis? Mr. Bowers, research, yes, and come back to us, okay. That's all, okay, does everybody understand that, to, uh, the motion is to, uh, allow Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Bowers, county attorney, research this issue and report back to us at our next commission, depending on the feasibility of, uh, allowing only, uh, fireworks, uh, by Carter County citizens.
I, I can end that research right now, we, we can't dislimit it to Carter County citizens, if you'll make it to the Carter County fire departments, to nonprofit fire departments, then I'll research that, but, but just a citizen, we can't restrict commerce based on where you live, I, we, we can't.
Well, see, it's given to the fire department, it's one that's going to benefit this resolution if it passes, but, uh, I don't foresee that any citizen, other than what sells it now, we have got one down here going out to Lord Hogg that sells it, other than what does it now, I don't see foresee it to be any, any kind of trouble, according to C task and all of them, it's a very simple resolution, if the city and county agrees to it.
He thinks the city agrees to it, that's, that's going to be the, I, I, we can certainly talk with cities if we're to feel they're to the pass.
So you'll, you'll talk to, uh, to Mr. Day?
I'll be glad you talk, I'll be glad.
Is there any other further discussion on this resolution, is anybody unclear to what's going to do? Or what we're voting on?
We are giving Mr. Bowers the powers to go and talk to these individuals and bar before we get in, before we do anything else, just want to be there to talk about this thing about.
That's correct. Okay. Call roll, please.
Mr. Peter.
Aye.
Willie Kim.
Aye.
Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seuss.
Aye.
Charles Van Kyn.
Aye.
Yelsey Testa.
Aye.
Steve Morin.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Blakich.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless.
Bobby Dees.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
No.
Bill Armstrong, Patty.
Aye.
Window, motion clear. Any other, Commissioner Thomas, Mr. Lawrence.
I'd, uh, I'd just like to commend Chairman Bowers, I came down, uh, well, you know what, I had a Thursday, I had, uh, lived, came down Friday to get my package, and Mr. Blakich locked the cheap bites, you couldn't stand that down here before I was. I came back, uh, Saturday morning to get my package, Mr. Bowers had loaded up all our packets, and he handed deliver packets from up into the hood docks of Stony Creek, and thrown them out, and carried every, all these packets, and I'd just like to thank you for your, uh, leadership in that.
You're welcome.
You do have a work ethic, you're a good man.
I went to see a whole lot of roads where that's at. Mr. Van Kyn.
Are you sure?
I wrote it down, so I can go back.
I looked at all the elders, uh, early on and saw a large contingent of people from your district, Mr. Bowers, and I thought, this is my occasion to help, Mr. Bowers.
I've been waiting for this moment.
Well, you probably don't need to help, sir, but there were several of these people that are now gone because they were elderly, and I was trying to get to the floor to point out two things. One is, you have a Gmail that came to me from, uh, one of these individuals via Nashville, and, uh, it has to do with permitting of aggregates USA, the, uh, the fluid from the sand mine on Holts Mountain. It appears that aggregates USA is ne- nearer to getting this permit than, uh, to, to, uh, dump moly acid, acetic acid, according to what they're saying, or mild acid, into Davis Ranch that runs in front of Northeast State Community College, that's the farm. The, I've been doing a little discussion sometime through with Keith, uh, Bowers, and I remember we had a discussion on karst. Karst is a binder that binds limestone rock together, it has evaporations over the, over the eons, and what destroys this binder is a mild acid, any mild, any acid, but a mild acid. All I say is don't park your corn mist over a sinkhole. Have you read about that? This, this country is full of karst formations, associated with caves, and I wouldn't even know how to spell the word, but I'd manage to keep, uh, I have to keep, uh, heart. So I can envision the southeast side of Holts Mountain, once you're around your se- mildly acidic acid overflows out of the lagoon and just large enough to hold it, down into the caves that are already there, and then we will have a three hundred acre scar on the mountain, maybe a six hundred acre scar. People do not come to see scars on mountains if they, if tourism is all we have left, and what that was about was, Mr. Bowers, is I know you're against the sand mine, because I heard you say that, these people need some help. We as a commission could have gone, could have gone against destroying a neighborhood, we said, we choose, we chose to sit and say, well, Mr. Jobs, I don't know, there, there wasn't many involved, but it was some. Now we've, uh, fool around until we may see the repercussions from it, I won't say it, because I'm too old to say it, cataracts and all that, you know what I mean? But our children, our grandchildren, those people that played in those caves, it's gone, and I apologize to Ms. Allen, who had to leave because of her age and whatever, but I've done what I, I've done what I thought ought to do, folks, and I've done as much of it as I could do under the constraints of freedom of speech. Freedom of speech, and I didn't, I didn't read this, I, I read this, but I didn't make it in. Freedom of speech, or the, or the dissemination, or the retarding of speech destroys both the speaker and the hearer, that's very profound, I think Winston Churchill might have said that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kyn. Is there any other, uh, Commissioner Thomas, Mr. Thomas, yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Mr. Bowers again. Going to Johnson City on Nineteenth, about two mile out, you see Johnson City put a sign that says, speed limit thirty mile an hour, that's inside this city. About thirty feet below there, there's a sign that says fifty-five mile an hour. Now technically speaking, maybe not happen, but technically speaking, if a Johnson City police officer sees you going down through that fifty-five mile an hour, he can stop you and run to your tenant, because that's their speed limit supposed to be. Now, is there anything that we can do to get one of the two changed, because it was built to help get traffic to between this bed and Johnson City, and if you're going to slow it down to thirty mile an hour, then we'll defeat an approach.
We need to talk to the city manager of Johnson City, find out if, if, why they haven't reduced that quickly, I know the spot, I, I, everybody, I think has spots.
Mr. Bowers, I've looked into that, because I brought this up to the highway committee meetings some time ago, this is a T-DOT situation, apparently, therefore, T-DOT would be the people to go to as opposed to city. One of them is a yellow sign that says thirty-five, you, you go leave a forty-five, and yellow sign says thirty-five, and then, then on the end of town almost, there's a fifty-five, uh, it's not necessarily confusing, it's to bring in revenue for speeding.
Uh, Chairman Bowers, if I'm not mistaken, a yellow sign is, uh, of the precautionary, and it's recommended, it's not actually a speed limit, uh, those are more, that's what T-DOT recommends, that you slow down to a certain point to get through a critical stage, so I, I, I could be mistaken, but I'm almost certain that those yellow speed signs are precautionary nature.
You may be right, I'll tell you what that sign may be, it may be exit speed, exit speed sign, but it doesn't say that, but you're probably right, you're all in that.
I would say that, I think.
Mr. Lewis.
It's an exit speed sign, I'll finish.
What we're forgetting, one thing, we, this sign is in Carter County, it's not in, uh, the police, it's not Washington, it's in Carter County, or, or, yeah, it is in Carter County, seriously.
Any other questions, John? Any other motions in here?
Some, aye.
And say.
Say.